Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Committee on Energy, Economic Development, and Tourism. We are on our 3 o'clock agenda with one decision-making on this agenda. That is Senate Bill 2474 relating to renewable energy. Members, we heard of heard this particular bill about two weeks ago. For some time to see if we could put energy zone language into this bill and have decided that we had another bill that we passed out last week that had energy zone. So we're going to just keep this bill as it is. Just to refresh your memory, it was about helping to make the interconnection process a little bit faster. Try to get, you know, once the PPPs are approved, if we could get HECO to work with a developer to get things online quicker. And we also added the requirement to hire a HARA. HARA stands for Hawaii Electric Reliability Administrator. This is kind of going to be like the energy traffic cop to make sure that, you know, everybody's doing their due diligence and we hasten this interconnection process along. So the bill we heard, 2474, we're going to pass with, sorry, with technical non-substantive amendments. That's the recommendation. Members, any discussion? If not, Senator, is Senator Favela here?
Yeah.
Oh, there him. There you are, brother. Okay.
No, we're close.
So the recommendation is to pass 2474 with tech amendments and the chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye for SB 2474 Committee on Energy, Economic Development, and Tourism. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Ms. Lucha votes aye. Senator Lee is excused. Senator Riviere.
Aye.
Senator Favela.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Fantastic. We are adjourned for this agenda. Aloha, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our 3 o'clock, 3:05 joint hearing between the Committee on Energy, Economic Development, and Tourism and our good friends with the Committee on Water and Land. We are in room 224 at the Capitol. And I have to make a few housekeeping remarks before we begin. This meeting, including the audio and video of remote participants, is being streamed live on the YouTube. You will find links to viewing options on all Senate meetings on the live and on-demand video page of the Legislature's website, so you can watch us anytime, all the time, and free. That is your government assistance-free hearings. In the unlikely event that we hit technical turbulence and this hearing takes a terrible nosedive, the committee will reconvene and discuss any outstanding business. A public notice will be posted on the Legislature's website. And for those of you who are participating remotely, all testified audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it is your turn to testify. The agenda only has one bill on it, that is Senate Bill 2398 relating to the Hawaii Community Development Authority. And on our testifiers list, we have Department of Hawaiian Home Lands. Is anybody from DL and R?
Good afternoon, chairs, vice chairs, members of the committees. Ian Hero call with DL and R Land Division. Will stand on our testimony, supporting the intent of the bill and offering comments and be available for any questions. And also, I know there's multiple testimonies from us. We're all the same. So there's, I'm the only one.
Thank you for joining us. HCD, you Pac or Craig? Anyone from HCD?
Not present yet, Chair.
Okay. And so I don't have a testifier's.
Well, you know why he was with us. We just finished with HCD the other day.
Is it anyone from County of Maui or the League of Women Voters online? Or anyone else on our testifier list? Okay. Members, any questions for DL and R?
Or HCD?
Or, but HCD?
Yeah, there's testimony.
No, but they're not joining us live?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So we have nobody to ask questions of.
Yeah.
So we only have a representative from DL and R. Any questions for that represented by any of the members of either committee? Okay. If not, we will take a very brief recess prior to taking the vote. Thank you for your patience. We're reconvening the Joint Committees on Economic Development, Energy, and Tourism and our committee, friends on the Committee on Water and Land. On our 305 agenda, we're discussing and about to vote on Senate Bill 2398. The two chairs have conferred and would like to make a number of amendments to the bill, starting off with taking DL and R's recommendations about adding a new subsection E to include the chairperson of the Board of Land and Natural Resources, or their designee as a member of the Pulehenui Community Development District. Amendment number two will be to take HCD's recommendation pertaining to the composition of the authority to make the membership align with other related measures, essentially replacing the Director of the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development or the director's designee with, this new language is going to be the Director of the Department of Business, Economic Development, and Tourism, or the director's designee. And we're also going to delete extraneous language on page 14, lines 10 through 12, provided that initial terms of all voting members initially appointed pursuant to Act 61 Session Laws of Hawaii 2014 shall commence on March 1, 2015, just to just the staggering of the membership, so that we don't have a whole bunch of people going out at one time. And then we're going to also make technical non-substantive amendments. Members, any discussion? If not, Senator Ms. Lucha, I vote yes.
This is, members, we're voting on SB 2398. Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Ms. Lucha votes aye. Senator Lee.
Aye.
Senator Riviere.
Aye.
Senator Favela. Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, for the Committee on Water and Land, same recommendations to pass SB 2398 with amendments. Any discussions, members of Water and Land, hearing, non-seeing, non- Senator Riviere for the vote. Chair goes aye.
Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Keith Agron is excused. Senator Ms. Lucha.
Aye.
And I vote aye. And Senator Favela.
Reservation.
Reservation, good afternoon, Chair.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned for this.
Thank you.
Here.
This first period, I'm done, Water and Land. You do.
One.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us for Committee on Energy, Economic Development, and Tourism. We are on our 3:10 agenda. This February 16 in room 224. Four items on the agenda. The first one is Senate Bill 3049 relating to employer information. On our testifier list, we have Dr. Eugene Tia from DBED.
Aloha. My name is Eugene Tia. I'm the Economic Research Administrator with DBED. We stand on our testimony. It's a part, it will be available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Tia. And Dr. Tia is the only individual who signed up to testify with us. So, members, any questions for Dr. Tia? Dr. Tia, I just have one quick question. Retail merchants submitted some testimony saying that they are concerned about the type of information that's going to be sought and the parameters of the information. They just kind of see that this is open-ended and some vital, you know, secret business information might be leaked to you and put into a study. Can you kind of address that? Are we getting any proprietary information with this study that you're doing?
Yeah, thank you for the question. The program was transferred from the Labor Department last year with Act 88. And we are doing exactly the same thing as when the program with the DLIR. And the information we asked from employers is basically the employment, their wages. And I don't think we have asked any question about proprietary information.
There's the.
Oh, Dr. Tia, so you're not getting any proprietary information, sharing it publicly, correct?
No, it's exactly the same information DLIR has been collecting over the so many years in the past. We are not collecting any additional information beyond what the business reported to DLIR before. It's the same.
Okay, got it. Members, any further questions? Okay, thank you for joining us, Dr. Tia. We're going to move on to Senate Bill 3054 relating to Hawaii Film and Creative Industries' Development Special Fund. On our testifiers list, we have Georgia Skinner from DBED.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Georgia Skinner, head of Creative Industries, here from McCartney, our director. We strongly support the measure. Again, this seeks to take rents from Kalai Loa Studio as well as other facilities that DBED manages and put them back into the community for seed funding for local creative projects. I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgia. We also have Tom Yamachika from the Tax Foundation.
Not present, Chair.
Okay. Members, any questions for Georgia? Georgia, I have a real quick question. So what you're asking for here is $750,000, basically to help the smaller filmmakers get their projects going, correct?
Yes. I mean, that would be the amount that we would be able to spend every year currently within the DBED trust account with the rents from Kalai Loa. We have about $600,000 that we can transfer. Also want to point out that during an audit several years ago by the state auditor, that trust accounts for certain of them within DBED were recognized as should be in a special fund. So we're also trying to address that in the same way that we are giving back to the community through this hopefully sustainable effort of income in addition to appropriations, foundation grants, et cetera.
A lot of us are familiar with the guidelines around this, you know, the state film tax credit, right, for projects above $200,000. This will help pay for those smaller projects. But do you have rules for that? I mean, certain thresholds, certain requirements?
Yes. We have developed an extensive rolling RFP that addresses most of that. It has been vetted by WPAG. And we will also, again, because these would not be subject to the tax credit, Act 275, we do feel that it's very important to have additional rules and consult with others within the government to make sure that we do that properly. So that'd be an additional discussion that we will have with both no tax, although it doesn't really involve them specifically. But this is, again, like a tech accelerator or any of the tech funds used to support seed funding for startups. It's basically the same premise. So we could borrow a lot from our fellow partners in the technology industry in that regard.
Would you mind sending us a copy of that rolling RFP, just to give us some assurances that there are clear guidelines as to who can feed?
Absolutely. Yes. Thank you.
Actually, yes. If I can dig deeper into the weeds a little on the who, particularly the Hawaii-based filmmakers, I guess, is there like any residency requirements? Because they could very well be from other states and then just to take, try to take advantage of our particular, our generosity. So are you accepting that particular part? Yeah.
Yes, we, we have to address that. Of course, there is always the legal question of the residency requirement as it relates to sometimes opinions even by the Attorney General's office. But the key focus here is residents of Hawaii, those that have been through training programs, they also have to have a caveat that they have matching funds. So this isn't solely subsidizing, this isn't the only amount of funds that they would be seeking. And for seed startups, we're not going any, we're really not going to go over $50,000 on any of these. We are not planning to award $750,000 to one person. So it is meant to grow our population of very successful creatives and filmmakers in the state that otherwise would not be participating in finding seed funding for this purpose, particularly in our rural areas.
Have you started working with a pool of talent? And how big is that or expansive is that pool?
It is expansive, you know, through programs like Creative Lab Hawaii, which we've trained, I think, over 275 individuals. A lot of success there with filmmakers, some from Hawaii Island, you know, being successful in launching their careers as screenwriters while still remaining here in Hawaii, paying taxes in Hawaii, and pursuing their career that they never thought they could. We have numerous residents, of course, that have graduated from the Academy for Creative Media Programs and have gone on, we are at a precipice now of really high level of interest in our local film and creative talent. So we certainly can give you metrics. I have them. And I believe Senator Riviere in an early hearing on another matter asked for that. So we would be happy to provide you with how we quantify how many are there and then the different levels of support that we would give.
Yes, please. Thank you, George.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Members, any further questions? Thank you, Georgia. We're going to move on to the next bill, that is Senate Bill 2584 relating to energy interconnection. On our testifiers list, first, we have Dean Nishino from DCCA.
Aloha and good afternoon, Chair Wakai. Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Dean Nishino. I'm with the Division of Consumer Advocacy. You have my written testimony in front of you, offering comments. I would point out, if you do decide to pass on the bill, we do offer two minor typographical corrections at the end of my testimony. Thank you. I'm available for questions if any. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Scott Glenn from the Hawaii State Energy Office.
Not present, Chair.
Okay. Jay Griffin from the PUC.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members. PUC stands on its written testimony, offering comments. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Rocky Bold from Hawaii Solar Energy Association.
Not present, Chair.
Okay. Stephanie Sakamoto from BIA.
Not present, Chair.
Oh, my goodness. You're all absent. Ken Aramaki from Hawaii Hawaiian Electric. Hey, hi, Ken.
Hi. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Ken Aramaki, Director of Transmission, Distribution, and Interconnection Planning at Hawaiian Electric, testifying on behalf of Hawaiian Electric in opposition of this bill. While Hawaiian Electric supports and appreciates what the bill is trying to do, we oppose the proposed guidelines, which are unnecessary and redundant to processes and procedures already in place. A few processes are already in place.
Thank you.
Bless you. The Hawaiian Electric Integrated Grid Planning Process, which develops near and long-term grid needs, are already reduces demand and peak load forecasts to account for distributed energy resources and energy efficiency additions, ultimately to right-size planned infrastructure investments. In terms of large service requests that we get, the company recently rolled out a process to educate and work with customers developing properties and buildings to identify energy efficiency, distributed energy resources, and other opportunities to reduce their energy demands. Further, should large utility investments be required, such projects already go through a lengthy, comprehensive regulatory process, which this bill proposes to add another step to the process, placing more pressure on customers' development timelines. Through these current processes and procedures, Hawaiian Electric is already required to mitigate the issues set in this bill. Thank you for the opportunity to testify and will be available for questions.
Thank you for joining us, Ken. Sandy Wong from Tesla.
Yes. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Sandy Wong. I'm testifying on behalf of Tesla. We have provided written testimony. Let me just summarize for you. If the committee is inclined to pass this measure out, we would ask that EV charging station applications be exempt from this requirement. And simply because EV charging station application already has a screening process, an extensive screening process, and we think this bill would add another layer to it. And, you know, as we're trying to get more EVs on the road and get, you know, encourage people to buy EVs by having access to charging stations, we think by adding another layer, we're going to delay the, the, the process of getting EVs on the road. Thank you. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Sandy. That's all we have, members, for those who have signed up to testify on this bill. Any questions of those who've joined us? Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the last bill on the agenda, that is Senate Bill 1065 relating to the Department of Business, Economic Development, and Tourism. First on our testifiers list, we have John DeFries from HTA.
Chair Wakai, would you be so kind enough to allow me to defer until the final testimonies? For myself, Kalani and Keith, please.
Sure, you guys can be our anchor testifiers. But we'll get back to you and Kalani and Keith. Next, we have Stephanie Donahoe from the Kohala Coast Resort Association.
Aloha, Chair Wakai and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I submitted written testimony and don't want to duplicate what is there. But as I previously served as the tourism specialist in the County of Hawaii Economic Development Office in research and development, I think it's important to share the perspective of that office. County of Hawaii Mayor Roth, as well as the Economic Development Office, do not wish to move these funds to those offices. There is not enough expertise within the county framework for this type of program. And we've already been working very closely with Hawaii Tourism Authority to align the county's needs with those of the industry. I'd also like to share, in Colorado, when we did this, they took the funding from the Colorado Tourism Authority. Each county got into a competitive environment that we did not have equitability, especially between the smaller counties and the larger counties. And while I understand you tried to address that with the 200,000 resident issue that you placed into the bill, I'm afraid it would create an unequal playing field if it were to move to the counties. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Stephanie. We have Wendy LaRos from the Kona Kohala Chamber of Commerce.
All right. Aloha, Chair Wakai and the Senate Committee on Energy, Economic Development, and Tourism. Yes, my name is Wendy LaRos. I'm the president and CEO of the Kona Kohala Chamber of Commerce. We strongly oppose Senate Bill 1065. With 425 member businesses and organizations, our mission is to provide leadership and advocacy for a successful business environment here in West Hawaii. Tourism drives our local economy. We strongly support Hawaii Tourism Authority and the implementation of the Destination Management Action Plans. As a member of the steering committee, the Kona Kohala Chamber actively participated in the formation of the Hawaii Island DMAP. This experience was hard work, but very inspiring, as multiple stakeholders came together to create a shared vision to rebuild, redefine, and reset the direction of tourism. These plans are now in place. It's the second year of a three-year process, and this is not the time to alter the course and undermine the work of our communities. We ask that legislators stop making changes to the Hawaii Tourism Authority and allow the agency to fulfill its mission. Mahalo.
Thank you, Wendy. Jerry Gibson?
Senators, my name is Jerry Gibson, providing testimony on behalf of the Hawaii Hotel Alliance and BRE Hotels in opposition of SB 1065. We ask you to consider the following bullet points, please. Number one, protect our communities from our tourism through the eradication of illegal short-term rentals. HTA's tourism management enables consistent messaging on this issue, provides reliable data and information used by policymakers. Number two, educate our guests and attract respectful visitors. Having multiple messages from multiple agencies on multiple islands will neuter the efficacy of these efforts locally and internationally. Bullet point number three, sound fiscal stewardship of our state's resources. There will be zero consistency in buying power if the kuliana of HTA were broken into several pieces and parceled out across the state, creating four new bureaucracies. And number four, SB 1065 raises serious legal concerns. In sum, the Hawaii Hotel Alliance respectfully submits that the Hawaii Tourism Authority be given the time and resources requisite to fulfilling these duties already in their charge. And we urge your committees' deferral of SB 1065. Mahalo, Senate Committee, for your time and commitment to tourism. Aloha.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
Thank you.
Keiko McClewen?
Aloha, Chair Wakai, Vice Chairman Lucha, and honorable members of the committee. Thank you so much for the time this afternoon to kuka kuka about the Hawaii Tourism Authority and its critical role in primarily bridging the gap between the strategic marketing engagements that they embark on and the Kamaaina like you and I who call Hawaii home. As you saw in voluminous testimony from chambers and from the very Office of Economic Development that this bill seeks to assign that authority to, this is a well-intended and, and unfortunately a difficult needle to thread. While the industry is struggling to recover, we've never more needed a central authority to bridge our strategic marketing efforts and the needs of our Kamaaina. And we ask respectfully that you defer this bill and allow the Hawaii Tourism Authority to do the good work. We are available for any questions that you have, and you have our written testimony to rely upon. Mahalo, Nui.
Thank you, Keiko. That's all we have for live testimony. So if you don't mind, we'll go back to John DeFries and his team to share their insights with us. Mr. DeFries?
Thank you, Chair Wakai. And likewise, we have submitted written testimony that I would actually like to expand on. And the testimony speaks for itself. But beyond that, I think that when we first saw the proposed legislation, which was very definitive and had huge, has huge implications to the future of HTA, the natural response is for us to retreat and, and get into a polarized relationship with it. Subsequently, we come forward to oppose it. But what I'm here today to, to ask you as Chair and all of you as the committee is, is there is a means by which we can establish a middle ground that will help you achieve the, the objectives that you prioritize and allow us to continue to function with this. And so I too, while I stand in opposition, ask that we defer on this until Chair, you and I and the, and your committee and my staff can look at this in a comprehensive manner. Thank you. I'll call on Kalani at this time. It's not my job to call on, it's so, apologize, Chair. But if you will, Kalani.
Thanks, members. Aloha. You know, I think John and the other partners have shared sort of the vision. And I think for me, in the seven months that I've taken on this role as Chief Brand Officer, I've been able to assess and better understand how things have been done. And I think we can make some meaningful changes. I think we're committed to making sure that we can do two things. One is to create travel demand. That's a part of our statutory requirement, right? So we like some of the top portion of the bill that defines destination management, makes it a part of HRS 201B. I think that's important. I think I would also share that we have a responsibility to the Kamaaina and to the place, or the people in the place. And so for me, I'm committed to making sure that we can make prudent decisions, we can make wise decisions, and that we can understand the complexity of, of this change and really appreciate how interconnected the industry is and also our community. And again, like others have asked, is for the time for us to be able to do that. Chair, you know me well, I think enough over these years. I'm committed to making that happen. And I hear you loud and clear, and we'll keep working. Thanks. Keith Reagan?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Vice Chair and members. I think John and Kalani really summed up our testimony very well. We obviously, you know, want to work closely with you, Chair, and your committee. Having been at HTA now for three years, I have watched this organization literally transform itself and focus very clearly on working to resolve any issues that may exist within the community as it relates to resident sentiment. Kalani knows firsthand, you know, through the.
Kalani knows firsthand, you know, through the Destination Management Action Plan process, we have engaged the communities. You have heard from the testimony and you see in the testimony, the good work that we've been doing over the past 20 months is resonating. It is a compact between us and those communities. And we just ask, you know, for your support as we go forward in this process to address these issues and concerns, but we're not going to be able to do it without your support. We would humbly ask, as has been asked by many of the testifiers here, please defer this measure and please work with us as we go forward. Mahalo, Chair.
Thank you, Keith. Well, that's all we have for testifiers. Members, any questions for those who have joined us? Senator Revere?
Aloha for Kalani, please. Thank you. So I'm pretty sure I just heard that you, HT, is not worried so much as the top part of the bill? And you're actually in support of changing the definitions from, you know, marketing to management and such as that? So I just want to be clear, then your objections are to the reallocation of the money and creating the whole county nexus? That is your objection? The rest of the bill is more or less amenable to HTA, or you can work with it?
Kalani, you go first.
Yes, Senator, I think it's important that we codify a definition for regenerative tourism. I think it's important that we make amendments to 201B at the top portion of the bill that help make clear that we have that responsibility to conduct destination management. I don't think destination management excludes marketing. Those are not two separate functions. And I think it's important to understand that the destination branding that we do is important because it helps educate the visitor before they arrive. And so that is part of destination management, is making sure, like others have testified today, that our brand is communicated consistently with a statewide message. We get better efficacy, we get better buying power, and our media buys, et cetera. And that's important, but also it's important from the perspective that as we educate people about Hawaii, who we are, what responsibilities they have, and the opportunities that they have to ma'ama this place. I think that's an important lever in making sure we can see the other DMAP actions through, which tend to be more on-the-ground and tactical in nature.
Senator Revere, I would add that we're fortunate to have someone of the caliber of Professor Pauline Sheldon, who's also on the board of the Hawaii Green Growth Partnership, and well-known, well-respected for her work in the field of regenerative tourism. And we would certainly turn to someone like her to help us bring a comprehensive definition of that terminology into this legislation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
I have a number of questions. We'll start off with you, Mr. DeFreeze. You and your team ask for more time, and I understand you putting the DMAPs together. But in the past two years, where tourism has evaporated and is slowly coming back, your budget allocations do not mirror what you say in terms of really going after better management, putting the DMAPs into motion, and actually putting money into some of the DMAPs that the communities are crying for. I look at your 2021 budget, you have $77 million to allocate. Out of that $77 million, 47 million or 61% is still in the buckets of branding, salaries for branding, and sports. So I put those three together, and that all accounts for about $47 million. So, and I think I heard Kalani talk about somehow you can't tease out marketing and management. But the reality is, shouldn't we be taking the time to put what resources you have into really improving like the physical plant in Hawaii, improving the signage, maybe working with DLR to put enforcement officers at certain locations, interpretive storytellers at certain locations, really looking at how do we make the Hawaii experience better, both for natural resource preservation as well as expanding people's understanding of what they're looking at sometimes, whether it be the ocean or scenic views or what have you, rather than continue to give your contractors money who provide nice videos, pay to have them shown all over the world, when in the case, especially for your foreign arrivals, no one is coming from foreign lands and you're spending, you're spending, I can't break it down for the foreign areas, but you're spending millions of dollars to promote Hawaii through your marketers to an audience that's not coming. And it still baffles me how we're two years into this pandemic and you're still doing things the same way of giving your marketers a bulk of whatever resources you have available. Help me understand that.
Let me refer to my notes, because you and I have had this conversation, and I've tried to assure you that your voice, the voice of your committee, as well as those on the House side, have been heard. If you compare the US contract, in 2019, it was 25.8. In 2021, it was 16.6, actual. In Japan, it went from 9 million to 3.6, actual, between 2019 and 2021. In Canada, it went from 800,000 to 400,000. And so the adjustments were made. We are subject, as you know, to a monthly board meeting where these plans are put forth and debated vigorously. And so what I want to assure you is that your voice and the voice of your committee is being heard. Moving forward, can we become much more precise in the way these allocations are arrived at so that it can encompass some of the infrastructure improvements that you're talking about? I would hope so, and I would hope that that would lead us to a budget that exceeds 60 million, so that we can do both and do it in a collaborative manner. I think if anything, I look back at the 16 months I've been here. The one thing that is non-monetary that I'm extremely motivated by is the nature of the relationships that we have been able to forge, better relationships with DOT, DLR, DOH, all the way down the line. Because unless we do this as a multi-agency task group, we're not going to be able to manage this. And you pointed to certain improvements that I believe should be prioritized and budgeted accordingly. And frankly, that is something, this year, under the new HTA, which has been reconstructed with last year's legislation, what I'm trying to do is move out of a debate and move into a collaboration and make sure that your priorities as a committee are moving to the top of our list, and I'm confident that we can do this.
Okay, so I appreciate the movement, but let's take what you mentioned just now about how you cut USA, marketing budget, Japan, Canada, Oceania, and Korea budgets. And you have, to your credit, whittled them down, but especially for the foreign areas, there's nothing to, you know, nothing to market to, because they're not coming. So for example, the baseline is, what's the per cost per visitor arrival? So in the past, the rule of thumb was anywhere from $5 to $8. Japan, USA was like $4, Japan was like $5. China, Korea were in the $6 to $8 range. That was what Hawaii paid for in the past. And even with the cuts that you just mentioned, we can see that in Korea, it costs you $29 for Korea to come here, based on your reduced funding. For Oceania, that's Australia and New Zealand, you pay $43 per person. Keep in mind, the previous rule of thumb was $5, so you're now at $43. Canada was $6.54. That's slightly up from a dollar from what it was before. But Japan, Japan is like the worst example where in the past, we spent about $5.10 per Japanese visitor. Under the current plan, you're spending $174 per Japanese visitor. Who are you marketing to when they're not coming? Shouldn't we have used this $3.5 million for Japan and put it into the DMAPs and really helped the communities get what they want, rather than continuing to sell Hawaii to an audience that is not coming? And for the foreseeable future, they're not coming. We've been lulled into this belief that we're going to have, what was it called, bubble tourism that never materialized? There was some other Japanese thing with ministers of foreign country. And we were always coached by the contractors that we were about to make, turn the corner, we're about to turn the corner. And two years later, after two years of millions of dollars going out to that market, all of the foreign markets, not just Japan, there's no return on investment. And we could have put two years' worth of HTA funding into improving the physical plant of Hawaii so that when the day comes, we are ready to go to embrace them with a full enriched experience here in Hawaii.
You know, I'm going to, before Kalani comments, and then I also want, since we have somebody of the, within the industry, I'm going to ask Jerry Gibson to comment on this metric of cost per visitor in his perspective. I've never talked to Jerry about this, but since we have him on. But, you know, we made the decision to stay in Japan, even when the market was fundamentally closed. As it turned out, we ended up with just north of 24,000 visitors last calendar year. We ended up with those visitors spending twice the amount of time, and we ended up generating, hold on one second here.
Can I just add though, Mr. DeFreeze, you got 24,000 Japanese visitors, you spent $3.5 million to bring them here. HTA used to be marketing to Europe, Central and South America. You cut those budgets long ago. Last year, there were 31,000 people from Europe, South America, and Central America that came here. So we spent absolutely nothing in those three areas and got 31,000 visitors, which eclipses the $3.5 million you spent on Japan to bring in 24,000 visitors.
Well, and I would caution us from trying to establish calendar year 2021 as our baseline, but for that 3.6 million that we invested in Japan, the 24,000, it generated visitor spending of 82.9 million and state tax revenue of 9.76. Now, I'm not taking away from what happened with Europe and what I believe is either Latin and South America, but also recognizing that the response from those markets in the absence of our contractors is also a byproduct of the fact that the competitive destinations that Hawaii competes against, when the global economy is healthy, we're offline, we're nonexistent. And so Hawaii looked like a shining pearl in the Pacific, which we are, and attracted that. I have no doubt, Senator, that reruns of Hawaii 5-0 and Magnum in Europe and South America are driving some of that activity, because as we know, marketing has a very long tail. And the brand of Hawaii has that staying power. But I'll stop there. And Jerry, I'd like for you to comment on that particular metric.
Sure, I'm happy to. John, can everybody hear me okay? Okay, you know, I certainly agree in sprinkling the infield with our marketing dollars, and I'm very, I'm very high on marketing. You know, just thinking about regenerative tourism, it starts before they get to our shores and before they get to our market, we need to market to them. And when I look at a ROI, Senator, of 30, 35, 40, 50 dollars per customer to come here, and they're spending a couple thousand dollars at a minimum to come here, I look at that as a very, very good ROI. I also look at, you know, if you look at Pepsi and Coke, you know, I may drink Coca-Cola every day, but they're still marketing it to me. Why are they marketing to me? So that I continue to do so. Same with other destinations, easy to go to Mexico, easy to go to the Caribbean, easy to go to Bermuda, you know? And when people are sitting in the mainland US, Central and Chicago, they can go to those destinations. However, if it's cold in Chicago, we're marketing to them from Hawaii, and we're showing beautiful ocean and beautiful beaches, et cetera. They, you know, you better think that they're going to be coming here, or thinking about coming here. So I believe that, yes, we have to spend our precious dollars that we're allowed to have, we have to spend them right. But I believe there is an ROI, and I don't think that spending 30, 40, 50 dollars per person when they're coming here and spending a couple thousand at a minimum is not a good ROI. I think it's a very good one. So that's kind of my take on the marketing piece.
Appreciate it, Jerry. Kalani, please weigh in.
Yeah, Senator, I would also just weigh the complexity of the market allocations goes much beyond a cost of acquisition. It's an important number to know and understand, but it's one in a tool chest that we need to employ. And so what I've undertaken, again, like I've told you over the last seven months, is really to understand deeply what has been done and what we can do moving forward. I think there's a lot of opportunities as we look toward market allocations for the next fiscal year and maybe some broad categories and opportunity. How do we define the unconstrained market opportunity that exists in various markets globally? What kind of propensity exists or defining the tendencies and preferences of a market toward a destination like Hawaii? In terms of value, how do we determine the value proposition of a market on both sides? What is the potential yield per visitor that we're attracting? And then also, what is the cost of attracting that visitor to your point? So again, it's more than just cost of acquisition. And then we also have to look at some of the constraints and what kind of categories and qualify the opportunity based on external factors and risks and really take all of those things and then come up with a number. And so really, I just want to impress upon the committee and the public that we're going to look at that, and it's important that we understand the complexity of these decisions and that we make sure that we make those decisions based in data and in the best interest of the state.
Members, any further questions? Okay, thank you, everyone. We're going to take a brief recess prior to taking the vote. Aloha, we're back, and we are the Committee on Energy, Economic Development, Tourism. We are on our 310 agenda with four bills that we are about to take a vote on. The first bill on our agenda is Senate Bill 3049 relating to employer information. We heard from Dr. Tiam that he got the responsibility of doing labor research, but didn't get the opportunity and ability to have that information transferred to him. We have to do it in statute, so that's what this bill is doing. And he assured us that they are not getting proprietary information, and I'm not going to share secrets with the world. So with that assurance, we'd like to pass this measure with technical non-substantive amendments. Members, any discussion? If not, Senator Misalucha, our vote, yes?
Members, we are voting on SB 3049. Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Senator Misalucha votes aye. Senator Lee?
Aye.
Senator Revere?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Chair, with five votes, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. We are going on to Senate Bill 3054 relating to the Hawaii Film and Creative Industries Development Special Fund. This is a debit efforts to help the small little guy who is trying to make a film, because we, in the past, spent a lot of money to help the big guys, and that's why NCIS is, and the Magnum, and the Chubongis, and the Jurassic Parks of the world have come here. But we don't want to forget the one, a local, hopefully, producer that might be the next Steven Spielberg or George Lucas. And this is our way to help spawn younger, less experienced talent to get their movies off the ground. So I'd like to pass this measure as is. Members, any discussion? If not, Senator Misalucha, I vote yes.
Chair votes aye on SB 3054 with the recommendation to pass as is. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Lee?
Aye.
Senator Revere?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Senate Bill 2584 relating to energy interconnection. I'd like to move this measure out with DCC's two recommendations, which were spelling corrections. We are also going to defect the date to July 1, 2050. Any discussion? We are also going to defect the date to July 1, 2050. Any discussion? If not, Senator Misalucha, I vote yes.
Chair, we are voting on SB 2584. Chair recommends pass with amendments. All members present, are there any reservations? Hearing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. And members on the last bill, Senate Bill 1065 SD1 relating to the Department of Business, Economic Development, and Tourism. I'd like to move this measure out with a number of amendments. And before we stick, I just want to convey that I appreciate the HTA's efforts and the board's efforts to really move them towards destination management. We don't see that evidence currently in their budget, but we'll, you know, put full faith in the HTA staff as well as the board that we're going to see a shift in the way they budget and really embrace the DMAPs and what the community input is. So we are going to take out Part III, Section 8. That's a section where we have the counties driving tourism in the future, and we're going to keep it structurally status quo so that it continues to manage all of its contractors. We're going to outline the goal, objectives, and actions of the DMAPs. We're essentially going to codify the DMAPs. So we're going to make it clear that this is what the community has been asking for and that you, HTA, should be really chasing all that the community wants. We're going to also require the HTA follow-up, the DMAPs for specifically Kauai, Maui Nui, Hawaii Island, and Oahu. And also create appropriations out of the general funds for HTA for each of the DMAPs. We're not putting in an actual amount, but saying that there is a bucket created within HTA for DMAP funding and will lead to ways and means to figure out what that level of funding is. But clearly, again, reinforce the legislature's desire to see community recommendations fulfilled and also make technical non-substantive amendments. Those are the number, those are the recommendations for amending this bill. Any discussion?
Yeah, Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to tell you, I appreciate the changes to remove the language that give the state monies to the counties. The language was to remove them, and I really appreciate that because we know that the counties are not set up for marketing. Really appreciate it because we have a lot of people in the industry that it was against giving the money to the county, especially when we come to our tourism moving forward. I think that was a great idea. I heard that strongly that, you know, Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association was also strongly against this bill and a lot of the different agencies. So thank you. Thank you for the changes, Chair. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? If not, Senator Misalucha on Senate Bill 1065 SD1, I vote yes.
Chair votes aye on SB 1065 SD1. Chair recommends pass with amendments. Of all members present, are there any reservations? Any objections? Chair, hearing none, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.